Are you ready to go?
All right, all right. Call me in order.
Mayor Wester.
Yep.
Fulton.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Here.
Yeah, and Jerry.
Just left.
Just left.
There's a guy.
You have the call?
Yeah.
Got a call right before the...
No consent agenda?
Didn't even get that down this year.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? If not, any help you approve? Salute. Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Fulton.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, well, now open the public hearing on the proposed 2014-15 budget.
Well, I've received no comment. No comments on it, but...
Okay, we will...
Of course, nothing, nothing has changed.
Nothing's changed.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Anything?
No.
You want to hear about it one more time?
No, we heard it once.
Hello?
Curtis.
Curtis. We've heard it many times.
What's the, uh, what's the total amount of debt you guys are carrying right now?
I don't think they're going to include that in here, Curtis.
You didn't include it, okay.
I, I can get that for you.
Okay.
The last trees were cut.
Okay, no input on the public hearing, we will now close the public hearing. Okay, do you have any other... Any motion to approve the budget? Salute. Second? We'll call.
Fulton.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Mardell, you have the floor.
Good. I know you're always happy to see me.
Yeah, salute.
I'm Mardell Shady. And I have a project I want to talk to you about. And it's called a Little Free Library. And I'm sorry that I couldn't get this in any bigger. But this is sort of what it looks like. It looks like an overgrown Boone house. And I first saw one down at Boone, at a rest stop by the biking and walking trail. And I, I just was took my breath away. The Little Free Library started back in 2009. And a man in Wisconsin made this in the form of a schoolhouse, put it on a post in his front yard and said, "Three books, take one, leave one." And it took off. They're all over the United States. And of course, the mission is to promote the love of reading. And having been a teacher and an avid reader, I just thought it would be a good project to put down in the campground so that campers can take a book, read it, leave one, whatever. It's entirely free. It's just, this is just a personal project of mine. I'm doing the financing. Ron Batin is building it. Matter of fact, he has it pretty much built. It'll be my duty and my friends to keep it full of books for adults and juniors and children. The only thing I need, well, I need your permission to begin with. I, Ron was talking about a post to put it on. And it would be best if we could put it somewhere near the office so that people would see it. He said something about dimensions of a post and Chris, I don't, I'm a, I don't know anything about it. But I will pay for the post if the city would put it in wherever we decide to put it. Are there any questions? I think maybe I should ask that first.
How many books are there?
It'll probably hold 12, maybe. It's not very big.
Yep.
I've seen them on the, uh, program on somewhere.
Yeah, on TV, there's been some...
Eastern Iowa, they're pretty popular over there.
Barb Prudus said she saw a couple of names.
Yeah.
If you talked to Ruth the worse, you would just like to put it...
I just, we just talked.
We can find a place, Barb. I don't know, you know, somewhere there by the office.
Lon can probably put a post in for us.
Sure.
Okay.
No problem.
Are there any questions? Somebody asked me, what if somebody steals the books? Well, if it's free, you can't steal it, so...
Is this, is this kind of painted Lakeview blue?
No, Ron didn't, he thought he was going to paint it white. He, we, a lot of them are just, um, varnish, and he said paint would be better than varnish.
Maybe it's more attractive to pose people out there. Or whatever, you know, just reflect it out.
I will be responsible for the books since I have, oh, tons of people, the City Library, Little Wallack Library are willing to donate children's books. My daughters, my friends. What?
I have a whole basement full.
Oh, yeah? Well, we may need them. So are there any other questions?
Hang on a second. Is there any questions from the council as we entertain a motion to put this up?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Get Gus on there.
Get Gus.
Okay. Uh, grant permission to place it on, place it near the campground?
Oh, that's a good idea. I thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you for taking...
This is just a...
It's a good idea.
A neat project.
Yep, very good.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll, we'll take a vote on this one, though. Stankin?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Fulton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Mardell.
Good.
I thank you.
Just quick clarification. Are you letting Mardell buy the post?
What?
That was, that was mentioned during conversation.
We'll get the post. Is that what you're asking?
We got the post.
We got the post.
Okay.
We got it. Lon's got one somewhere.
We'll get some. We'll make, we'll make one.
Well, I, I couldn't buy the post.
Oh, we can post that.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to have a walk, run?
Yep, you want to explain that a little bit, say?
All right, yep.
They're planning, uh, Reese Waters, uh, one of the teachers at the school, uh, they want to have a ringer run walk. And it basically follows the same pattern as, uh, the other one that we do every year for...
For Rockin' and...
Yeah. And they're just asking, um, basically for approval of the route. And I believe that's in the package.
They weren't asking for any street closures or anything, just basically permission to...
Permission to...
To hold, hold the event and use city streets?
So...
This is a fundraiser for...
The travel club or something?
Travel club, yeah. They do a trick every year.
Where are they going? They take the music one, isn't it?
No, it's separate. There's about two, there's two different travel clubs.
So they do sponsor the runners? Is that how they raise money?
Yeah, the runners, sponsors and...
Okay, so if the city council would get together, sponsor John, commend that, we'd do that?
I'm sure of it.
We'd walk, you know, I think that might be a good idea. We'll, we'll discuss that sometime.
I'd like to, but I don't think I can.
Yeah, well, no, we just want John, he's the mayor. Good public relations, I think.
Yeah, and they have no idea how easy it will be to sign up for this, this is their first time and...
Well, it'd only cost them 500 bucks to get you to jump in the lake.
Yeah. And it was a hundred bucks for people to put their foot on the head underwater.
Nobody told me that.
It's $2,000 for that. Yeah. If you have any motion to allow them to do the walk, salute. Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Fulton?
Yep.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, campground project, we've met a couple times. Scott, you want to bring him up to speed?
You want to come present, Ruth?
What am I going to present?
Basically, what's on page 12.
On page 12. Well, we've had our little committee meetings. And our proposal is to do Area B with 45 to 50 foot wide lots. Does anybody read it? Have it in the package?
Yes, we got it.
Because we haven't done any upgrading down there since 2004.
14, 13.
And we have to start making some changes somewhere.
12, 13, 14, 15. Um, I ran, talked to us, I ran it past a few campers that I camp with. And, um, the consensus was, it's a great, great, um, idea. And as far as, you know, where the camp sites are, the size of the camp sites especially.
Yeah. Well, my little map, and you see the, the new, the new camp, the campers are coming in different colors now, so we got it.
But they got paint in pink, though, it's...
Okay. Well, we'll know that you've covered that name.
That's on...
But hopefully, it was wet when we were down there trying to measure. So until we get in there and really measure right, we may even be able to get more than 21, be able to get 24.
Especially about the idea of the, uh, concrete pads. Especially in that area because it's so wet.
Well, it all depends on what, what other things you can do with it.
About crushed rock, crushed mat. Instead, that's, ain't that what they use out there?
Yeah.
Those baser, yeah, crushed white, white rock, yeah.
Yeah. There was a reason not to do that, wasn't it?
Well, the biggest thing is then they keep building them up, building them up, and then we got a big problem again. If we do a concrete pad, we can make everything, hopefully, everything drained to where we want it to drain. And you'll be able to maintain the height a little bit better, Carrie, because you're not going to keep adding on to it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what's happening that, I don't know what section it is, where all the limestone is now.
The section we did in 2004.
There aren't any grass left for people. And so they really don't particularly care for those sites.
That crushed concrete is good, but...
It's what?
The, the, the crushed concrete? That's some stuff that kids barefooted way, oh.
But that is what we were thinking about for the Area B, to make that into, uh, a walk-up lots. And also, we plan on eliminating some sites in two other areas. And we think we can work it to where there wouldn't have to be any, um, electrical boxes or anything moved at this time until we would get ready to do that section later time, just to make some of those sites a little bigger. Because those two areas are where there's really some small sites also.
But as far as that area goes, Ruth, this would be done so that we could have the, have the new spaces in place by 2015, right?
Preferably if they can be done in the fall. Because that other area that we did, didn't, did not get done until then spring. And we couldn't use it until July 1st. And then when we did use it, we had rain and everybody got stuck in it. It was too soft. It just, it's got to have time to settle down. I don't know that much about dirt work, but...
Well, if you do the pads, that'll help.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So as far as the timeline, um...
I don't know. We'll have a, see if we can do it and when the guys have got the time to do it.
There's two, two aspects on that second one, though, is, is coming up with a plan to re-lot things. And the, the plan has to be done quickly. Campground opens on April 15th. And we need to have a plan in place already because we'll start accepting reservations for 2015. So you got to have the plan done and know that they would be implemented and you'd be losing X number of sites out of each one of these areas. So, uh, we're really relying on Ruth and Nancy to work up a plan on that as far as how, how many sites might be eliminated in each one of them. And you can see in the areas on, on the map, it'll show you...
Like I said, it was...
Right, one of them's right south of the...
Yeah, it was so wet down there. We've got it. And we can get in there and really do some serious measuring. But I think there would be at least six, taking eight out of each one of those sections, if not eight. I can make some...
So as far as going forward on the project, I think, um, we need to decide how we're going to finance this, right?
Yes.
And then also have that plan in place by, by the time we open.
I, I don't, um, the Area B, we wouldn't have to have anything in place on that by the time we opened. But these other sections were re-eliminating. I do have to have them placed.
Right, right.
So, um, because I'm not, I'm not afraid once they would get done that they would be not rented. Because I think they would be. So it's just a matter of...
And hope the weather factor, little runs. That's another thing, too.
And then that's all, I guess, the timing thing up to, would be up to you, I guess, as far as...
Well, you know what you got for projects to start with?
Yeah.
You got the playground and I guess you can push the sidewalk back probably if you wanted to. But, uh, that would be a rain deal down there because, and the dirt's going to take a long time.
Yeah. Because, you know, when you think about that, the Area A, there to put those lots in it, figuring substantial amounts of filled earth. And never, haven't shot the thing yet to know what you need for, for sure. But, you know, just think hundreds of truckloads of dirt if we were to raise the, the entire area. So, you know, that's the first thing. We would, we would put this road in. You saw the proposed road going down, uh, through the middle of, of this new section. And then, uh, new water and sewer, new electric. And then, uh, and then you're finally putting in all these concrete pads. You see kind of what the cost estimates were there? Again, I'm on page 12. For the, for this first, this, uh, first phase, these lots in Area B, total project cost, and this is just rough yet, really rough, because we don't really have any cost estimates together other than, like I say, just some vague notions. Total is about $65,000. With concrete pads being $27,000 of that.
Oh, okay. But do you put any, you don't put any tile, you can't put any tile, there ain't no place to drain it, though, huh?
Yeah, there, I think we can get it all, it all drains toward the lake.
Yeah.
But, you know...
That makes more to put a drainage tile in there to...
Well, I don't think we can put a drainage tile on there.
Oh, I see.
It's going to have to surface drain. I don't think we can get enough fill over top of the area. Uh, and I'm, I'll know more when I get to that point. You know, um, what I really thought I'd do is bring Jim Smith down there and let him look at it. And see if he thought it was feasible. Put a tile in there, you know, if you went with the dual wall or something like that, maybe it could take... If the campers stay on the pads, then yeah, maybe we can get a tile in there and have, so it's all covered up and looking nice.
You know, that is, to me, we've drained a lot of, a lot of soil in the country with the, you know... In fact, I think maybe we've got to blow some now, we could, you know?
Were you still thinking about that other section by the garage? Drain that over that way, or are you going to try to take that up the other way?
I, until we get down there and measure something when the snow gets out.
Um, is there a timeline when we have to decide when we need to use TIF monies for this? And, um, when...
Yeah, well...
Can we start applying for grants or how?
Yep, I think that it can roll around here pretty quick. And really for that, I want to talk just real briefly about a third phase of our, of our project then would be construct a new bathhouse slash storm shelter to replace the existing one down by the beach. So basically, you just tear that out and replace it at its existing site. Talked with, with an engineer, I talked with JEO out of Carroll. And, uh, they're going to get us some real rough proposals on maybe just a rough, rough idea of the project cost as well as just some rough idea of engineering cost on that. Kind of looking at this in two ways, just talking with them that, uh, if we want to look at the storm shelter aspect of it, you could, um, you could just make it to be a real sturdy building and the engineer will design it as such, okay? Or to take it, the next step would be to have it FEMA approved and, and be designed to a FEMA spec. But if you design it to that FEMA spec, there may be some money to go along with that, too. So we'll have them do some exploration and see if there's, uh, see if there's any, any funds associated with that and what, really what the cost difference is going to be. So, you know, as we look at that and just think in these rough terms, where it costs $65,000 for the first section, really unknown about what the, the next section would be about re-lotting these areas out, um, for 2015. And then my number is 200 to 250,000 on a, on a bathhouse facility. And nothing, that's just my number. Don't really have anything to base that on. But if you look at 13, these are just some ideas about project financing. Again, um, some short-term financing, because we would need to do something short-term to be able to finance, uh, the improvements this year. Remember, $65,000 for that first section. So you look at the campground revenues and, and they exceeded expenses last year by over $38,000. So you could say that could be put towards the project. We was talking about using sales tax money. We actually have sales tax money that is spoken for, for lots of other projects. And really, um, if we need something there for cash flow in the short term, there'd be money there. But basically, it's spoken for and we wouldn't consider, uh, sales taxes being a good alternative. Electric fund has some cash reserves and, and it would, hey, it may be appropriate to have the electric fund pay for the electric installation. And then, uh, we could also look at some internal loans. And again, this likely comes from the electric funds. See, uh, our electric fund, electric improvement fund, having that, uh, projected budget of about 618,000. So if we needed a short-term financing option there, we could look at an internal loan. Uh, taking a look at, at longer-term options, you can always do a debt issuance. And interest costs right now are, of course, are very low. It's, uh, issuing debts, um, right now is about as good as it can be. Just understand that this is a general corporate purpose. Like if we did streets, that's an essential corporate purpose and there's a big difference that some certain things are allowed as essential corporate purpose and the, and the council can just issue the debt on their own. If it's a general corporate purpose, uh, you would need to have a referendum passed. Or they have this thing called a reverse referendum that allows you to issue some debt. In our case, it's up to $400,000 on a reverse referendum where the council could take action. And then if the public decided that they wanted to have a vote, it's basically a petition to the council then that about, uh, taking that to a referendum. But the other option would be tax increment financing, okay? And just under our current plan, the Evapco TIF generates about $110,000 a year. And we have budgeted for that for this upcoming year. And under our current plan, we could do that for two additional years. Okay? So 2016-17 would be the last year that the city would receive funds from the Evapco TIF. Okay? Under our current plan, and that's important to say, under our current plan, because you can amend things if you want. So the TIF process here is we need to amend our urban renewal plan. And then that includes just a specific use of about how these TIF dollars would be spent. Schedule a consultation session with the county and the school. They're invited to, uh, to know what we would be doing with, with these TIF dollars. Uh, city council holds a, a formal public hearing on this. And then, yeah, you could issue some debt, issue debt to be repaid by TIF. Again, either internal or some external through a capital loan. Uh, just a couple of things. In talking with our, with our bond counsel about this, he certainly viewed this as a, as a feasible project to be financed with TIF. The top one, there's the most important one, though, the duration. We have our, our current urban renewal plan and it's effective for 15 years. So we set this up, um, right as we were recruiting Evapco to come to town. And we set this up for 15 years. So like I said, 16-17 would be the last year that, uh, TIF taxes could be collected from the Evapco property under our current plan. Now, state law allows you to collect taxes for up to 20 years, okay? And if you wanted to amend your plan to continue to receive Evapco TIF taxes, it's feasible and you could do that. Not that I would really recommend it, though. At some point, you want to release the funds and, and have them go back to the school and the county and the other taxing entities. But if we're going to have to look at a, a urban renewal plan amendment for our project, other things that our, our, uh, legal counsel had just suggested is, you know, if you think that, that you would ever want to add any area to it, you can only expend TIF money in the TIF district. If you ever thought that you ever wanted to add any area to it, now's the time to do it. He also said if you ever want to add any future capital projects to it, now's the time to do it, since we were, we were amending that plan. Page 17, this just shows our urban renewal areas. And we had the original one set up as the pink, that of course is Evapco, that, that was, uh, set up in 99. 2007, we amended this to include, uh, at the time, it was dealing with the streetscape out front. So we included lots of right-of-ways of these streets around town where we thought that we would be doing some streetscape work. And then we also included Camp Crescent. So the Camp Crescent area is already in the urban renewal area. And then you can see, uh, the amendment from 2009 was the, uh, boulders and the, and the land to the north. Because we received TIF taxes off that, too. You can kind of see the green line that runs along the highway. We, we added the entire right-of-way of the highway out there just because of the notion of extending a water main that way. Just, we, we had had that discussion in the past about extending a water main basically along the highway out to Evapco and being able to address some pressure concerns out there that way. We haven't, we haven't really discussed that here much in the, in the recent past. It's just kind of died away. We, we have not really had pressure concerns and Evapco's been doing pretty well with the pressure out there. Any questions on this tax increment financing stuff?
Once we have a little more hard numbers, it'd be a little easier to discuss it, wouldn't it? I mean, right now, we'd be...
Got some cost on the building that would help.
Yeah. I mean, that's...
Just one, two, three.
We can sit here and speculate all we want, until we get some hard numbers, we need to, then we can put something together. You know, kind of look what our best options are, but, uh, I think we need to...
I'm assuming Jay and Yoda will come up with something that we have to work on.
I might hear from him this week, of course, I won't be around, but...
He'll be on vacation.
Always that way if we approve it, isn't that our...
Yeah, is it at the bottom of the agenda?
Never seem to get very far away.
Okay. What's, uh, we'll get some hard numbers, bring, bring them back. Do you really have some, some idea about what this is going to entail? And checking the feasibility of any types of financing, including TIF. Anybody have any, really, yeah, concerns against using TIF?
January, we can make it work. Campground is pretty important to the city.
Why, huh?
We have to update the campground.
When's the last time we ever did anything down at the campground, other than...
2004.
2004? What did we do down there that time?
Added those sites, 139 to 164.
I don't know what's going on down south.
Oh, they're rolling dice in the kitchen here. I got the door closed.
Yay.
Playing sparkle.
Playing sparkle.
Oh, sure.
So, we should have some numbers next council meeting, that would, we'd all have a better feel for things.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can do.
As long as everybody's on board to keep going, that's what counts. Can we talk to Jerry about this?
Jerry, he's on the committee.
That's right, I haven't seen him at the meetings.
He's been there, wasn't he?
Yeah.
First one, at least.
First one, so...
Was he?
Yeah. I didn't hear him saying it.
He's not here.
That's right.
Have you guys sent Ruth down to the D N R yet?
No, we haven't talked to the D N R. But, yeah, you're right, we should send Ruth, 'cause Ruth gets everything she wants, right?
For what?
We'll think of something.
We want dirt out of, out of the spoil site here.
Go ahead and get it.
South of town.
It's okay.
Go ahead and get it, yeah.
As soon as they get the geese out of town...
I think it's all alike to start well, so, it's a recycle.
It's kinda coming back, that's right.
Too bad they didn't hose it in there in the first place. That's where, how that come from in the first place. 'Cause I remember when I was a kid with family, we used to fish a lot closer up on the road than that, you know, now, you know? That was old lake, wasn't it, years ago?
Fifty-two or fifty-four or something like that.
Yeah. That would've been about nine, ten.
Okay, we'll move on to the collective bargaining agreement with the local.
Yeah, this was the tentative agreement that we had, had reached last, uh, last Monday. It is, uh...
It's an official motion.
Yeah, pre-scheduled weekend duties get changed from one to two hours, addresses testing for lineman apprenticeship, and then includes two percent wage increase for the one-year contract.
I'll make the motion to purr it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
We'll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Let's take a look real quick at, uh, stuff on the apprenticeship program, it's actually on page two. So, we had originally enrolled in the apprenticeship program in two thousand one, and at that time, the program was, was through merchant apprenticeship, okay? I A M U does not work through the merchant program anymore. But this new program, there's, there's this informational sheet on here. So, I talked to Chris Pham down there, he said that most or all of Jeff and Brian's on-the-job training hours could likely be transferred, okay? Then they would have to complete written exams and a hand-on, hands-on portion. So, that's, that's different than what the merchant program was, there was no hands-on portion before, but there would be now, okay? There is this placement test, and, you know, just roughly, it's like taking the unit test along the way, and basically you can continue to test up as far as you can. Then it's conceivable, I guess you pass all the tests. You know, there is a, a six-month probationary period in the program, so you at least gotta be in for six months. But basically, they look at it as a four-year program, where, kinda semesters, where you take aid in an exam after finishing kind of the semester's worth of a work. But, again, we could place further along in that if they, if they could pass these exams. We got the, the documents on, on the apprenticeship program, and that was two or three hours worth of reading, so it's not done yet, but, uh, we'll have some more information for you. Got anything, Bill? Talked to Jeff and Brian, and they were at least excited about the notion that their on-the-job hours would transfer. And we're talking about the exams, they gotta go down to I A M U down in Ankeny to take the exams.
Often do they offer that?
Uh, just as scheduled, so it's, it doesn't happen very often. Special, special scheduling for the, for person.
Okay, fourteen-ten, the resolution hiring of seasonal employees. These are basically what we had last year, except for one.
Yeah, that's, uh, page twenty-one is that resolution. Couple different things. In, in the campground attendant, uh, last year, we had Kessie Harmon, Jack and, and Shannon, okay? This year, we would propose that, uh, Jack and Shannon are, uh, they, they generally are scheduled for quite a few hours, they're available to work. The other ones, uh, have other jobs, Kessie has, has another job, Jesse Wilson has another job also, and then Christina Booth is, is available, but she would be, she's kind of the younger, new one, okay? Between, between all of those folks, we should have plenty of staff available to cover, to cover all the time, and to give a little flexibility to people about whether they wanna be working or not. Other than that, that is, uh, you're looking at staff to be the same as what it was last year.
So, did you have any, uh, people wanting apps for the lifeguard?
Yeah, we got two, two applications out, and I haven't got those back, and those are due on the twenty-second of, if I found that right?
March?
Twenty-first of March, maybe.
Before, probably, before.
Nah, but, anyway, a couple more weeks.
Yeah.
On, before those are due.
What about Cameron? Did you hear anything about him?
Yeah, I talked to Cameron, and, um, you know, Cameron, if, if he could get another job in the law enforcement field, he certainly would like that, uh, but he has not had any luck, any plans on coming to work for us this summer. He's going to school for law enforcement.
That's it.
Do you have a backup for him, in case he does find something else?
Nope.
Those are kinda handy to have, aren't they, these utilities in the summer? 'Cause we need one for the public works, that we can do the sewer with jetty, right?
And water main.
Water main, yeah.
Yeah, but we weren't gonna hire anybody just for the...
No, we could use the folders for it to help do that.
Right.
But if Cameron's, Cameron was, wasn't, Cameron, he was electrical last year, wasn't he, Bill?
Yeah.
What about for the weed whacker, or the...
Oh, for the grasshopper?
Yeah.
That looks like that's...
We haven't sent him any apps.
Yeah, so there was, there was an update in that, too, about the, at least the order status of it.
Yeah.
That, that the bids had come in. I talked to, to Ben Wallace about it, the bids came in, and it looked like they were probably gonna be able to do business with this company that they had wanted. Uh, and, uh, just that they still anticipated a delivery in June. So, what time in June, I'm not even really sure, but we'll need to be getting a couple people hired who can operate that. Ruth?
Sure.
Just that, you know, I, I would intend, I got the job description written on, on that, that says, uh, basically, two operators, and both of them have to have a C D L. Because, you know, you want both of them...
Operate the machine?
Pardon me?
Operate the machine?
No, to drive the dump truck.
All pros.
Yeah, uh, 'cause, yeah, we wanna be able to switch off operations there and have both of them be able to drive the dump truck. So, that, that'll be kind of the issue on that, is finding C D L drivers.
So, you know, it takes one guy to be on the floater deal?
Yeah.
Yep, one for each one, one on the floater, one on the truck, and then the switch.
Oh, it does, everything rolls it up and piles it, or what? How that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, they should back up to, and they just apron it off into a truck, off of the...
Like a bail, hey, I mean, you know?
Yeah, like a baler loader, I mean, it's a metal thing, dumps it in the truck, and take it out and dump it in the city dump, and when the water disappears, we got a pile of phosphate.
Uh, we're, we're exploring an opportunity to maybe work with a farmer and dispose of it on farmland. He's willing to take it, maybe. Which, you know, if it ends up out at the, at the dump, I think people will understand, but I'd be kinda concerned about the odor that, that would cause as it's drying out.
Yeah, but where they're probably gonna put all the, all the crops, so...
Hard to spread that.
That's what I think. Well, of course, these, these big news spreaders within, beaters up and down, they kick anything apart, don't they, a lot? I don't know.
Big thing is crop season.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, yeah, you won't be able to dump it out there.
You got a pasture, put it on or something, but I wouldn't think they want that.
Kill the pasture.
If we don't get the machine done, you'll, you'll have to store that stuff somewhere before they put it on the field, or at the farmer's store.
True, we'd have to figure out what to do on that. But, uh, the, the other part of that is this, oh, vegetation management plan, that Ben Wallace was working up a vegetation management plan, and he is working that up, and would keep the city involved as far as, is what he will be proposing for, for management, 'cause, uh, you know, it's not gonna cut all the grass out, and they have any intention of cutting all the grass out, so...
No.
It'll, it'll be according to this management.
Actually, they're good, probably a lot of rain, but out the situation, a lot.
And we're not gonna, we're not going to advertise for these two operators for a little while till we get a firm, and that's gonna show up, right?
Yeah, we wanna know when it's gonna show up.
That's my concern.
Um, yeah, but if you know anybody out there, just kinda talk it up about whether people would be interested or not.
In their part-time positions?
Yeah, they're, they're part-time, they're just part-time seasonal.
And then we'd have to decide on an hourly range, or...
Yes.
Orderly, got them for ten bucks, but I don't know if you can get them for ten. We want somebody that doesn't tear it to pieces, too.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll see what, when we get, how about a motion on fourteen-ten?
I wanna bring up one more point, see if this has any traction or not, but ask for some wage consideration for Mike Norris. Mike's proposed to make eleven dollars, twenty-five cents, and, uh, we increased Mike Mitchell's pay to thirteen dollars an hour, and if we could get Mike Norris up to twelve dollars an hour, I think that'd be great, the, uh, that'd cost about nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Ruth, is he worth it?
Yeah. He's, he's not a speed demon, but he gets it done.
But he don't break everything.
He's, he's very meticulous in what he does.
So, you wanna bump him up seventy-five cents?
I'd suggest that.
What's, uh...
What's his duty to entail, does he...
Yeah, so he's doing all, working, you know, kinda hand-in-hand with, with Mike Mitchell on everything, and Mike Norris does a lot more of the grounds maintenance stuff as opposed to building maintenance, right? Mike Mitchell does a lot of building maintenance stuff when needed.
And, and Mike Norris never complains, never complains, he just doesn't, whatever it is.
Does he help you out a lot, a lot, with that, with that, does that take some of the burden off you?
I tell ya, you're, that's pretty cheap getting in for that, 'cause he's very mechanical. I mean, he, he knows how to take care of the equipment, heads up.
He went to automotive mechanic school years ago.
Yeah, he used to be.
He was a mechanic manual, when I was...
Well, I think that, I'd make a motion, let me, give you a call.
Can we just change this to twelve dollars, and would you like to approve that resolution then, Terry?
Hmm, no problem, yes?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, we just change that to twelve dollars then?
That was Terry's motion on fourteen-ten.
Yep.
There's a second.
Go ahead.
Second. Okay, we'll call.
Okay, Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
We need to approve the purchase of a pickup for the Parks Department, make it official.
Good man.
It's a good pickup.
I got her locked up, but I don't think you can do about it now.
Yeah.
Is it automatic?
Yep, yeah.
I was a little worried about that straight stick business. Too many people know straight sticks anymore.
We would purchase, we have purchased it, eighty-five hundred dollars. Lakeview Motors took in the old Dodge on trade and gave us four hundred bucks for it, so the net would be eighty-one hundred dollars.
Do you have a motion to approve that?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Now, go ahead, do Gus. He is getting it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Pickup for the public works guys. Get all our bids in?
Uh, we, we sure have talked with, with, uh, several different dealerships, and we end up getting prices, uh, from a couple dealers on Ford. Lon talked with...
Rex, or Hanson.
Hanson on a Chevy, and somebody else on a Dodge.
Uh, well, the Dodge was bid, uh, Carroll.
Oh, yeah.
I got Carver on my mind, but an A Carver, but, uh...
Champion.
Champion. Um, the only thing with the Dodge is, is Ford's got a little niche in there where you can get a half-ton pickup with a three-quarter ton rear end, and, and, uh, which keeps, uh, the Dodge came in a little cheaper than that, but it isn't gonna do what we're really looking to do. Then I, Gus was talking about, um, a Chevy, when we bid it, and I hadn't, so I went over there the other day and had him look at it, and, uh, he called me today and said he was, he didn't wanna bid it, because he had to bid a three-quarter ton truck to get what Ford was getting, and it came in like seven thousand dollars higher. So, he said he wasn't gonna even submit a bid. So, we're really looking at, we got two bids on Ford trucks, and Scott has the pricing there, I think, for you.
There's, let's just say it's very close. Larry Beckman Motors, a little bidder, twenty-four thousand, one hundred eighty dollars, over Champion Ford, Carroll, twenty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars.
And we budgeted this, didn't we?
Yes, it's budgeted.
It's, it's past due getting here.
This is actually to replace the one that's sitting outside the shop and not operating.
What'd you do with that?
With that truck?
Did they call it away, or what?
Nah, not yet. What's, what do you think we need to do?
Big Iron?
See if Tim wants to give you something for it. I don't know, I personally, I think it...
Quant gave you what, three hundred, what?
Quant, probably around three hundred bucks, so...
We just take sealed bids on it, that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, you take sealed bids on it, it doesn't run right now, so...
But Big Iron did well last time, on the Crown Vic, we got way more than that was...
I don't know if we have to have it running to put it on Big Iron or not, but that would help.
Yeah, we just advertise it as is, can you jumpstart it?
Might be able to get it running.
Okay.
We shoving it out there, just kinda refuse to spend any more money on it.
Better get him something.
Just as well.
I make a motion, we'll get it back. Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Okay, Wolman?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Us?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
What color is it gonna be?
Thank you.
Blue. Blue.
That's the lights. I like that idea.
Yeah, really.
You're gonna learn to love blue, whether you like it or not.
Okay, engineering contract for wastewater treatment.
So, we were working with Bean Street Kim on this contract for the facility plan report for the sewer plant. Two things out of, out of the contract, I think, are important, is, is the scope of service, and that starts on page twenty-four, and then I know you're always interested in the cost, which is proposed to be seventeen thousand dollars. I, Aaron reviewed the contract, Lon and I reviewed the contract, and we all had some suggestions for, uh, that needed to be incorporated into it, or questions that needed to be answered, and everything was answered, um, just fine, and, and the, Aaron's recommendations were incorporated in there also, so, um, and we, we even talked a little bit about fee, and it did end up coming down five hundred bucks.
We'll have to have it get started.
Yeah, one of the things that, you know, just item F on page twenty-five, that's something that, that we thought was important, that as they're going through this study, they're gonna identify alternatives to meet the limits, and it had previously said that they would, would focus on upgrading the existing plant. And if we're gonna go through the study, I'd really like for them to give us the entire gamut of alternatives, also to look at, at new facilities, and then even looking at, at looking if, if things are truly an option. So, they will, uh, have expanded it in that regard, so give us all of the alternatives there. This does include, uh, of course, the physical analysis out of the plant, but it also includes the financial... This does include, uh, of course, the physical analysis out of the plant, but it also includes the financial analysis of the sewer utility. And, uh, gets to where this could set rates then. And also talks about a multi-year, year tiered rate. And, uh, I'm good with it, I think Aaron and, and Lon were good with it, and if the council's ready, we could get into this contract.
Any questions for Scott, Lon?
This, this engineer, they deal with, uh, with the filtering, they're, they're familiar with our plant, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's what, they, they deal with that more than a lot of the other companies, right?
Well, that's, and I'm just going by what he said.
Yeah, I tried, I didn't know if we addressed that, but they were not.
No, no, I mean, and I think, I mean, there's really basically three kinds of plants, and I'm sure they deal with all of them. But their company, the way he's said the other night, that that's what he has worked with the most.
Okay. That's what I heard too, I just wanted to make sure I heard that right, so...
Yeah. I mean, they're working on, uh, they've got a bid on Storm Lake's plant up there too, so... That's an activated sludge plant up there, so...
Okay, you have a motion to add on the contract with, with engineering for...
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolfman? Cleveland?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh... I wanna come up with these liaisons for the boards that the city has, so that we have some sort of, uh, interaction between the council and all these boards. Not that you're there to guide them, but it's, it's a way to kinda smooth things in, we know what they're doing, they know what we're doing. I just think it's an important thing that we all, you know, granted, you may not be able to make all the meetings, but, uh, if you got a feel for what they're doing, I think it's, it's helped the community club, we've had council, and I've been here for years, and the community club is a lot better than it's ever been. And I think it's because they find out that the, uh, the city's behind them, and I think these committees would do the same thing. If you have a councilman there that's listening, then things might work a little smoother. That's my plan.
You know, what I've been thinking about this, kind of in three regards, is that you can be their point of contact if they have, have any city issues. Okay? Be invited to, to attend any of their, any of their meetings. And then also just receive any of their correspondence and everything like that. So you really stay in the loop about, about what, what's going on with the groups.
There's other times to do this, too, I've been invited to these. I just think we'd do a better job as a council if, if we know what's going on, instead of all of a sudden something comes up, at least we all have a clue what's going on.
No problem, was it?
I thought we did this last time.
We did, it was just a formal thing.
Oh, okay.
We did, it was just more of a formal, so what Scott's happy with.
It gets in the minutes this way.
Yes. As far as landfill deals, other than the two meetings. How'd you enjoy that?
Uh, look for recycling shingles to be coming real soon.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yep. Here's, they, uh, are working with this company out of Sioux Center, I believe. They have a spot in Cherokee where they crush them and shred them to recycle them into, uh, blacktop. And, uh, it'll take a lot of, uh, something like, uh, two hundred thousand tons of shingles inside county.
Especially if you get hailstorm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the average.
Scott, talk about the hailstorm.
Do they come around once in a while?
They got, they pick up, they pick up fifty tons at a time. Would, they'll storm out the landfill and then they'll, uh, pick them up, take them to Cherokee, shred them. A lot of other counties are hopping on board.
That's good to know. Okay, Lon?
They're looking good. After spring.
Are you healed up?
Right there.
The snowboard worked today, didn't it?
Yep. The only I told to Scott is that, I don't know if it saves any money, cause I had to go up and scrape afterward. And we got another six loads off the streets that way. And if we would do it right away, it wouldn't get packed down, so you could probably clean it up quicker, but it worked just fine. How long do you guys wanna do if you don't wanna pay the overtime? You know, it only takes them about two hours, so, you know, it isn't a lot of extra overtime, but that's up to you guys. I, we can do it during the day, it worked out just fine, so...
I think it worked well.
Yep.
Just to let you know, we did, we've implemented a practice here, had two, three, four years ago, about you plow snow on overtime hours, but you, you don't haul snow on overtime hours. So that's why wind roads were left there for the weekend and then all the way today.
Just save on overtime.
I like, just, uh, one question is, these trucks go round and round and you think we could, uh, you know, these people got their sidewalks cleaned off and you guys go by and they cover these sidewalks back up for people. And a big problem for me, cause I have a blower, but, you know, some of these people have to go back out and scoop, and I, I think we could maybe slow down just a touch and...
Well, yes and no.
I know.
Cause when you're out there plowing, you just can't, uh...
I just don't like to think we have to throw it ten, twelve feet, you know?
Well, and we haven't had a lot of snow this year, but there's years where you need to go faster to, to get it up there, but...
And I ain't trying to cause you any trouble, I just...
Yeah, well, I, I, no, I'm all for courtesy.
The first one was that real wet stuff the time before, I tell you what, that sidewalk was a mess.
Yeah, that was hard to move, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It takes speed to get that momentum to keep going.
I know it does, and, and I realize...
If you stop, you don't get started again. You gotta back up and hit it.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll tell the guys that, you know, be a little more courteous to people about, that have done that.
I just, uh...
You know, and if we go out and hard blade, you know, and we've, in the past, took our backhoe and the skid loader, and we cleaned the driveways off for them as we go. But on the first time around, you know, if they beat us to it, you know, we don't go out and clean it for them.
No. But I, you know, like I said, I ain't trying to cause trouble.
Today I have Barry in the blade, just kinda getting a feel for it. You know, we gotta start training them on that, and I told them I said, just go slow, which we weren't peeling much up, I was just letting him play, basically. Yes, we gotta start training them on how to run that big bugger.
Yeah. Well, I just, like I said, it ain't a problem for me with the blower, but some of these guys that have problems.
Oh, it was heavy, that was heavy snow that time before. I'll talk to them, Derek.
Yeah, yeah, now that's, you know, just...
Meter readings working well, electronic?
Yeah, yeah. They have one meter frozen broke, can we charge them for another new meter? You know, if they're gonna let it freeze, I don't think it's, I think they should get charged for a new meter.
Why would they let it freeze?
In this case, they ran out of propane.
Yeah.
Unoccupied house. But just a general, uh, thing about frozen water lines, cause you hear so much about frozen water lines, and I don't, I don't know why it is that we are fortunate enough the way we are. But we've had some frozen water lines, but there's only been a handful of them. And these lines have been private service lines. And again, just to understand, you know, we go to the, to the curb stop, and if we got water to the curb stop and they're, they're frozen from the curb stop in, it's just treated as a private issue. And, you know, one or two of our citizens haven't been too pleased maybe with our response, but that's...
Hell, there's two ways to look at that, though. You've always had water run through your vein, but they don't have water running through theirs all the time. But it sits there, and that's, that freezes up, and vein deepens up. Depends on where it's froze, is it froze at the water shut off, or is it froze up by the house?
Well, on the, two that I had to deal with the other day, we pulled the meters out and we have water to the meter. So we're actually pat, it isn't froze on our part or our water shut off, it's past that to the meter, I've had water to the meter.
That's their fault, then.
Yeah. Dennis Peters, across the street here, his truck shop, he's froze up, and he said, no big deal, just wait till spring. We worked it all out, we don't know where that one's froze.
Well, when it starts getting warmer, there's gonna be a lot of frozen lines.
I think so, too.
You gotta hurry back, then, Gus, dig them up?
Yeah, we'll agree there.
I'll bet we will, but... Okay, that's it?
That's it.
And Lon? Scott, administrative report?
Uh, just a couple things on the playground damage. We submitted the bill to the driver's insurance company and the total was six thousand some dollars. Uh, we actually received the check for that today. So we've, we've already been paid. Which leaves us with the notion of what we, what would we do with that spiral slide? The total bill was six thousand, four hundred dollars, whatever, uh, but the spiral slide is four thou, excuse me, five thousand, four hundred of that. We've offered that equipment, of course, out for, for bid, we've had one inquiry about it.
Sell it?
To sell it, yeah.
Did you...
Oh, no, did, did we sell it? No, we're still taking bids on it.
Okay.
I think we sold already with the insurance.
I was just, just gonna say.
Okay, we, we're getting money, more money from the insurance company, I would've hoped to ever get out of that.
We're gonna put that money towards the new stuff.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So...
I asked my question.
Does Quad still work?
Huh?
Will Quad still work?
I can't hear you.
Take that to Quad's?
Very much to take, I mean, the pipe are pretty light, you wouldn't get a ton of material there, probably.
Wouldn't get your gas money in the back of the old truck.
Fill the pickup up.
Take the pickup for the whole.
So, so what was that response that you got? I don't know, what, they just inquired about it, or...
Ah, they're interested, you know, they're interested enough to, they're really talking it up with, with their, it's a little town, uh, betterment committee. And they were really talking it up, I would kind of expect to hear something from them.
So, so, you know, we already got sixty-four hundred dollars, you know, and, and the slide is damaged.
Yeah, did you see those pictures of it, though? I mean, the spiral slide is damaged, maybe a foot in on the end on one side, you know? And I, I don't even know if it's any chance that you get a good fireball and start to patch the thing. But it's too old to get a, a replacement section of the slide, they had to bid us an entire of the slide, and... But I don't, wouldn't intend to replace the slide, that's...
Yeah, so for you, so you just came and took it out for us?
Put a regular slide?
Yeah, or, or not have anything there.
Yeah.
There's, there's another slide right next to it.
Oh.
It's one of these things where you have two slides that exit off the same platform. So then, I mean, they can, they can make something work.
I'll call them tomorrow.
That'd be great. Cause bids are due next Monday, so we'll know if anybody wanted it by then. Board of Adjustment meeting is, is Thursday at five thirty. And this is, Chad Schupp wants to put up a detached garage at his house that exceeds the height limit. Performance evaluations being done for employees here in the next couple weeks. And I would propose that we do my performance evaluation at the next council meeting.
We'll do that in closed session.
Yes. Uh, Sack County League meeting is Wednesday, March twelfth, it's in Litten at the Friendship Center.
Is that where it was last time?
For the Christmas party, it was the church.
Different caterer.
Different caterer.
I know. That's on a Wednesday, I assume.
That's a Wednesday, yeah.
Do they need a head count?
Yep, we'll need a head count.
I will go.
When are you gonna be in town?
I don't know yet. Plan on that, if I, I'll go next, we're in for Wisconsin tomorrow, so... Look for where the next snowstorm's at, that's where I'll go.
That's where you're going.
Yeah.
No, this is whatever the meal cost is gonna be, I don't know how much that'll be.
Either let me know or something, or they'll let me know that I go.
And then I do intend to try to take some time off here for the rest of the week. But we have a couple, a couple of meetings scheduled for this week, ones at Board of Adjustment, and I have a meeting scheduled with the GPS salesman on, on Wednesday morning. So if anybody's interested in seeing what that thing will be...
Eight thirty.
At eight thirty?
I get off the bus Wednesday, I get off the bus at eight thirty.
It'll be here at the office at eight thirty if you're...
We've been looking at this for years.
Where they, yeah, where's this guy from, or is this the first one we've ever had in here, or, yeah, is there other companies?
Boy, the other one, the other company that we've been trying to work with out of Omaha, Bean Street Kim had recommended it to us. Terrible service, they never even respond to us. Can't get them up here for nothing. This is, uh, another large company in the area that sells a tremble product, it's a, just a well-respected GPS product. And they will charge us accordingly.
That's something that's with my mother, otherwise I'd, you know, I'll leave it like that.
That's it for me.
Gus, you wanna move to a jury?
Yeah, I can do that.
Second?
Well, I wanna stay here all day.
Jerry, say yes.
Yes.